I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. The chair notes, there's a forum present. Let's do the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, 2.0 is additions and revisions to the agenda. Does anyone have anything?
Nope.
Get that.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Well, I just want to pull something out of consent agenda. We'll definitely get there.
Okay, 3.0 is correspondence and public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time. And at other times throughout the meeting, speakers are asked to raise your hand to be recognized by the chair. Give your name and address. Some limit comments to three minutes. For folks who are dialing in on their phone at a star six to unmute yourself or lower left-hand side of your computer screen if you are on the computer. And then as a reminder that we are very informal here. So as we move through the agenda, if there are items that you want to ask questions about or provide input on me, welcome back. Any public comment at this point?
Are you going to give an update on broadband?
I can. How about I do that during a...
You're saying, I didn't know whether you were going to do it during your staff, but I didn't see it on the agenda. And I knew they were supposed to do it at the end of December. So curious to know what's going on.
Yes, I will make note to update.
And also too is a follow-up on the last county court meeting about the health district. I hope there's some discussion or was the decision to wait until Commissioner Watkins and Delaney meet with about public health.
That was kind of my understanding that you were gonna...
Yeah, I think after we have our meeting, which we have scheduled, then we can give an update at the court meeting.
On the 18th.
Yeah. Okay, so the last email about the public information, that's also going to be discussed or that's something I have to get some timelines, so.
Yeah, so they, as an update to that, I think the commissioners on that, that our attorney did come back and say that she had some concerns with that policy. I conveyed those to the district last night. And that they, I think they still are contending that they, that their attorney is saying something else. And so we are going back and forth on how to resolve it.
Thank you.
Yes. Anything else for public comment at this point? If not under correspondence, we have a couple of items. There is a letter from Rich Harper, who chairs the Citizens Advisory Committee for Columbia Richlandville.
Should I comment on that?
Absolutely.
No action has been taken with regard to the railroad crossing delays on Cedar Springs Road near Berthold Road. Paving on Cedar Springs Road has been delayed for another year. That really doesn't have anything to do with the report to the county court. It's not part of the conditional use permit. I'd just like to state that for the record. And there isn't really anything in here that talks about waste management's compliance with the CUP. Which should be in the report to the county court.
Got it. Okay, so what does CUP?
Conditional use permit.
Okay.
And this is for the, this committee is to review, you're on that committee now?
Yes. Or so that's why I'm gonna go.
Waste Management's Compliance with the Conditional Use Permit.
Okay.
I think after working hopefully new board members today. So I think the plan is that we, they want to do a tour for everybody that's new. So we're hoping that we can go out there, do a tour, kind of set some standards of what we're wanting to discuss and how we're going to move forward from there. So hopefully.
Kind of a good kickoff.
Yeah, just get everyone up to speed and have a good understanding of what exactly was expected from the board.
I think there were also some confusions with some of the members previously who thought that their scope was broader than Columbia Rich. And thought, yeah, and thought that can waste was part of it, which is, is not. So.
So this would just be the site tour of the waste side.
Which should help them understand the committee itself, understand what the focus is, hopefully.
Which Leah gave me a tour the first of November. That was a really good tour. And it was of both sides, so.
Speaking of the, of the CAC, we also have an email from Kelly Longquist. Just letting us know that he would like to step down from, from the board. Then there's also, we just wanted to flag this for folks, that Department of Energy is currently accepting comments on, amendment one for the Oregon Trail Solar Facility. So if anybody is interested in weighing in with Department of Energy about the proposed amendment, which is basically extending construction deadlines. But this is your opportunity to do so if you have concerns, especially if you are a landowner nearby and would like to weigh in with conditions that you would like imposed on the developer. And let me see, last one is an email from Les Rourke, following up on some public health items. In particular, just doing a review of the program administrators' activities. And then also having the court discuss and really look at an annual performance evaluation. And so I won't read the whole thing, but for all of, all four of these items, if anybody wants to read them, they are always part of the court's agenda on the website. So in terms of Les's comments, I'm assuming these are things that Leah, as you kind of dive in, maybe you'll get a sense of how you might want to approach a review and how you want Pat and I and the public to participate and, and things like that. Okay, that's all I have for correspondence. Let's move into the consent agenda. Pat, you wanted to pull something?
I would like to pull 4.4. I guess it must go into unfinished business, but my recollection is pretty slammed here.
Yeah.
So, and then just a couple of things on the two meeting minutes before we approve them.
Well, before you say anything, I'm going to pull the December 21st ones.
Okay.
Okay.
And I've given my notes to Miranda already.
Well, the only, the only thing I had on the December 21st is where it says Winslow State that yes, there's probably a typo. Should say stated yes. Yes, I'm not sure what that, all that is. Not true with that. Stated that, I think it stated that she stated that, yes, yeah, instead of state that. And then on the December, send this little clarification for the substance in the part that it changed before. It says, review the previous item briefing. And it was reviewed the item briefing because it was the item briefing for that meeting, not something that if somebody looked into the minutes, I'd have to go back and search for it to find out what previous item briefing it was, or just the briefing for that meeting.
Okay, so for December 21st, it sounds like those were more substantial edits. Okay, so shall we hold the 21st, ask staff to make those corrections and then bring back for, okay. So we'll move this to next meeting. And then for 4.2, it sounded like it was just a word that needed to be corrected, Pat, just that?
What's that? Now, just, just.
Just that.
Yeah, it's just, it wasn't a previous item. It was the briefing for that meeting.
Okay.
That item.
And Miranda, that, you got that? Okay. So do you guys feel comfortable leaving that and just doing it as amended the meeting minutes for December 7th? Okay. Anything else on the consent agenda? So we have pulled 4.1 and pulled, 4.1 will be postponed until the next meeting. We pulled 4.4 and moved that under unfinished business at 5.3. And then amended the December 7th regular meeting minutes. Any other discussion? If not, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would second.
As amended.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda as amended, which consists of, consider approval of December 7th, 2022 regular meeting minutes as amended. Consider approval of January bill's pending review. Consider appointment of Nathan Hammer as Gillum County Budget Officer. Designate voting precincts Arlington number one, East Condon number six, West Condon number seven. Designate county roads outside of incorporated areas as Arlington, Condon and Lone Rock as road district number one. Designate Gillum County depositories, Bank of Eastern Oregon, US Bank and LGIP. And designate newspapers of record, Times Journal and Eastern Oregonian. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any post? Motion carries. Okay, I'm gonna. Back, so into 5.1, which is discussion and possible action on pilot agreement for Oregon Trail solar project. So just to recap, during our previous, our last meeting on the 21st, Avengrid Renewables came to see us. They are requesting the county approve a pilot, which is shorthand for payment in lieu of taxes agreement for its next solar project, Oregon Trail, which is just adjacent to the Montec Solar. That's going on right now in Sheller Flat. And the project is 41 megawatts, Avengrid, under a pilot, just for the public certification. And basically it sets the payment per megawatt and can range between 5,500 and 7,000. And it's to the court's discretion to decide which number between 5,500 and 7,000 it wants to choose. Avengrid asked us to approve the lowest amount, which is 5,500. They also proposed contributing 500 per megawatt split between two organizations. We discussed doing the ports a nonprofit and then SWCD is the two that would be split. To update you on the agreement, we had legal counsel. Avengrid provided the draft agreement, which was, I think, what they used over in Moore County. Our attorney had several edits that she wanted, she suggested we make. We received those last week, early last week, and sent them over to Avengrid and are waiting for them to let us know if they have any additional changes or things that they'd like to discuss. They did reach out to us yesterday and ask that we not take action on the agreement itself today while they are reviewing it, which I sort of expected. And then we're also waiting for the draft agreements with the two community organizations. And so that's kind of where we stand at the moment. One question that I wanted to pose.
Judge Pryor, may I interrupt you just for a quick moment?
Les, you there?
Yeah. Judge Pryor, would you recognize me just for a quick moment here? I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Is all of what you've just referred to, the legal counsel's edits and the, the information from Avengrid itself, has that been posted or is it available to us interested ones? I, I can't see where the, where it has been.
Oh, yeah, the agenda briefing has both the redline version, which is Laura's comments. And then there's also the clean version, which is her, has her changes, but it's clean, so you can read through.
I must have, I've just plain missed that. Okay, thank you for helping me. Appreciate it.
Sure. And I think I also saw Jed unmute. Jed, did you want to weigh in on sort of how the discussions are going?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
I double-checked with Delaney yesterday, just on the process and the steps that are remaining. There's two things to correlate, as I understand. One of those is to get the, the contribution agreements from Avengrid to the two community organizations. And I've asked our attorney to start looking into, to do that. We probably do need to settle on some kind of amount or, or, you know, some direction from the county. So we know what kind of amount you want to, you want Avengrid to contribute. And that, that correlates with your agreement as well. Because as you decide to allow and grant pilot payment and the specific agreement contract that goes with that on a county level, we just want to sync whatever, whatever you want us to do on the amount of a contribution. And as far as a, a draft agreement between the ports nonprofit and Avengrid, it would be, it would likely be a pretty simple MOU or whatever of stating Avengrid wants to donate a certain amount to the ports nonprofit. And it wouldn't necessarily hinge on your separate agreement for the pilot. That would be up to the, Gillum County to, the court to, you know, have some kind of assurance that way. I think the, the logical way to solve all this would be those, those agreements, both the ports nonprofit, together with the county's pilot agreement, could be adopted simultaneously. That would give some certainty to, to Avengrid in knowing what their obligations would be. And in the county, knowing that they would be able to receive appropriate investment in the county. So that's just my take on it. I realized that, you know, it'll, it'll need further review by Avengrid. And we have heard from Brian Walsh has visited with Leah Shannon. And they are willing to contribute. Maybe it would be helpful maybe for us, as you proceed, maybe not today, but just knowing some kind of level of your expectation of what they would be giving as a contribution to the nonprofit. Thank you.
Thanks Jed.
So he kind of answered some of what I was wondering, how do you tie the MOUs to the pilot agreement? How does that work? And then, because it looks like things, which they are, we're a little ahead of the game here. Or something that we can improve. And then my other question was, and I guess I've just heard this in, I couldn't tell you where, that the 7,000 is somewhere, 7,000 per megawatt is somewhere around possibly more than what the tax revenue would be. But I don't know that. Haven't talked to the assessor. Have you?
Yes, I did yesterday.
Because I don't, he doesn't get to assess the value on those. The Department of Revenue does. And so I, and I don't, I guess I just haven't even thought to do any research on what that tax value is. But I do know that these are very common in, in getting these projects kicked off.
So, so I visited with Jed yesterday. So, and he said his estimation was around 650,000 tax revenue.
So.
Yeah, which that would probably go down over the years.
I think when he and I talked, I can't remember if we were calculating based on the 7,000 or the 5,500. But I think what he, we were estimating it was going to be about a third.
Yeah.
Of what the regular taxes would be. And Brian Walsh kind of indicated that.
I remember that.
When he said like at year 15 is when the tax, when it, the taxes is actually on the other side. So question for you guys, because I think this would be helpful for both the community contributions as well as sort of wrapping up the pilot agreement is what? Where are we landing in terms of how much of a, what's the magic number between 5,500 and 7,000?
My recollection, the math, that's about $60,000 per year.
And if you're just looking at the 500, that's only 20,000 to divide up between two entities. And 10,000 is not going to get housing very far.
We understand.
Just saying.
And when I was thinking about it, I had two thoughts. One is I felt like I would be willing on the county side to take a haircut, but have the amount that we're taking the haircut go to the community organization. So if we took 5,500, then the 1,500 would be the one that would be split evenly between the two community organizations. And I understand, I haven't read this here, they would be saying there's a, you know, it's not a large enough project and da-da-da. We've heard that a lot.
Why I asked the question on, and now I remember him saying that on where he would be in the total tax revenue. There's a pretty good tax abatement just doing the 7,000.
Absolutely.
And the thing that, that's important to me is that you do get some discretionary funds you can use outside of those taxing districts. They're going to get all that tax revenue to use in other parts of the county. Because everybody gets to drive by these projects and whatever they can deposit it. Or there, the whole county has some impact and feel for them. And I think it's a way to distribute some of those funds, not very much to the county, to parts of the county that aren't in the tax district.
Yeah, so one of my thoughts, one of my shower thoughts this morning was, this could be done two ways. We could either say, we'll come in at the 5,500 and you sign the agreements with the two other entities for the 1,500 split between the two, 1,500 per megawatt. Or we could say, no, we're not, we're going to take the full seven, but we will commit to diverting a portion of those to these two organizations. So we.
What's that? How do you do that in, through our pressure? How do we take? Do we as a court get to do that?
Yes. Yeah, so what would happen is it would be similar to our SIP money that comes in. So I, when I spoke to Ethan and Chad about this, when we were first kicking this around, and likely what would happen is we would either run it through the SIP budget as a separate line item. Basically, we track that this is the solar payment that's coming in. And then on the budget side, we would decide where that money goes. So we would earmark every year, this amount goes to the port, this amount goes to SWCD, this amount goes to whatever else we decide we want to put the money toward. So we could do it that way, which would alleviate the need for the port and SWCD to sign, to negotiate agreements with Avengrid separately. Then the county would just hold the contract basically. And then in our budgeting process, we would just commit to, the only issue with that is it's a 15-year thing. The three of us may not be here in 15 years. So we would probably want to put something in place that says this was the intention, which with our waste management dollars, we do that through an ordinance. We pass an ordinance and we say this is how the money shall be divided up. Not that a future court can't change that, but it holds us a little bit more accountable. So we could also look at doing something like that. If, it could go either way. The end result, I think, would be the same. It's just whether you'd rather run the funds through us or whether you want to have them negotiate directly with the community organizations.
I mean, I'm, I'm not against having Avengrid say which way they'd like it to be. Because it's the same bottom line, same thing, you weigh.
Is, is the thought process though, regardless that we would like the contributions, whatever we are reducing on our end, we would like to be going to the community organizations, is that?
The tax, the, the payment and low of taxes is probably, we're often in incentives that we need to offer. But I, but I do think it's important, at least from my perspective, to always remember that from optics that we need to look from the county like we want industry to come in. And, and you're not going to get a lot of these projects, especially some of these bigger projects. And I, I was reading in the paper on a deal tomorrow in county of 15, 50%. You're not going to get a deal 50% into the taxes in that account. So we need to be aware that we need to do tax abatement if we want these projects to come to Gillum County.
Agreed. I do think though, at some point, I think the solar for me is a little bit different, only because it's not leaving permanent jobs here. And so like for us, we're going to do an abatement that basically for our communities, the benefit is the tax. And so.
One job that comes with that.
Exactly.
To it the most.
Yeah, so point taken. Like I definitely, and we have other companies that are looking here and I think may bring more jobs. So I'm always open to that, but I also want to make sure, I mean, we gave them a very good deal on Montec Solar. I mean, we gave them millions of dollars in tax abatement. So I feel like asking them to pay 60,000 on this one is not unreasonable.
For companies, they're still going to save billions even on this.
Even on that, yeah, they're still cutting their taxes by 60%, which was private. People would love that. Yeah. So, okay.
This is, this is Jed. Is, is it okay to comment again?
Yeah, go ahead Jed.
Yeah, you, you just brought up another aspect that's, that the court has discussed previously. You know, what, what you're working on right now is specific to this new Oregon Trail project. But the court has previously discussed just, just a desire to have that investment in the, in Gillum County from the first project, the first much larger project, 1,600 acre project, have some return on investment locally. And so I think that maybe plays into what you're hoping to get in contributions and turn around housing action happening. And just, you know, just a reminder, you know all that, but it, it could play into how you take action on this new Oregon Trail project. That's all I had to add. Thank you.
So in terms of next steps, I can go back to Avengrid and sort of give the two pathways. Let them know that our intention is, one way or the other, it's going to be 7,000. Whether that's a pilot with us, where we commit to sending the funds to the community organizations or we do the 5,500, but the other 1,500 is split between the two. And then I, I will do that today actually. And try to get us rescheduled for the next meeting to see if we have agreements at that point.
I am good with that.
Okay. All right, so that is what we'll do on that one. Anything else on that piece? Now, let's go into 5.2, discussion and possible action on second stories project grant program. So I've mentioned this a couple of times now, but we are starting to kick around a little bit more of this concept, the second stories project concept. And so for folks who, this is new to you, I'll just summarize it. Basically, it would be a collaboration between Gillum County, City of Condon, the Frontier Chamber, and then the business owners on, in this case, Condon's Main Street, that have. that have second stories that are underutilized. So not like the ESC building that already has folks upstairs. So we're looking at the local, the Roundup Arts Building across from Two Boys and then the M and A building, flats. What we have learned is that the state, SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, has an annual Main Street Revitalization Grant where they fund up to $200,000. And they are very interested in funding projects where second stories are rehabbed. And especially if those second stories turn into housing. So they are, they sort of have flagged that as something they're very interested in. And their application deadline is opening shortly. And so that basically what would happen is the chamber needs to apply for the grant. And so the chamber is asking for pre-applications to be in by Friday. And then the final application is not due until February 28th. So what I did was just take the liberty of drafting up very rough guidelines for what this might look like. And this would not pull this to anything as of yet. We'd still need to allocate funds in the budget and all that kind of stuff. And but really what I'm looking for is from you guys is, is this a good idea? Is this worth the county doing the investment and hopefully partnering with the city council on? If so, can I move forward with working with Kalen to try to chase these state funds? And that will allow us between now and February 28th, basically to work with the city and sort of dive in these guidelines, figure out how much the county will actually contribute, all of those kinds of things. And then obviously we need to budget for it as well. I just don't want us to miss a pot of money that our business owners might be able to utilize, and especially if we can use it to create some housing that might be exciting. So.
So I have a ton of questions.
Go for it. I'll see if I can answer them.
Well, I don't know that you can. I think that we're a little familiar because I'd like the main part of the discussion to be included in the work session, but I understand we have a grant pre-app that needs to be done by the sixth and we need to move forward with that one way or the other and get that stepped on. I think it's a great idea, but I have some concerns about the investment the county puts into the project. And when you start looking at $600,000 for four buildings out of the county budget, I have some concerns. And it looks to me like, and I realize the million dollar per project is a rough estimate of what it would cost to do one.
Yeah.
We've no engineering to back that up.
Yeah.
So the 200,000 is a small part of the million dollars in the end, at the end of the day. And if you did a project, it looks like this renews every year and you get another, you can apply year to year and get another 200,000. But you're only getting granted $200,000 on a million dollar project. Say the rest of it's coming from the county and the business owner, which I think is a big bite for a business owner to come with $200,000 in Gillum County to close a deal on a million dollar project. But all that being said, I know there's been a couple of approaches to not just not the, probably not even a recent court overdoing some of the VI in Arlington. It's $600,000 for the county would have fixed the problem we got in Arlington forever. And we've never had any inkling to do anything along those lines. So I want that to be, you know, at least in the thought process of what we're doing here, even though there's no grants in it. We're pushing this law because there's a $100,000 grant available and it's still going to cost the county a lot of money. If, if any of these budgets go.
Yeah.
So throwing that out there, would like to have the deeper discussion in our, to go with our work session on the 23rd.
It's on the 18th.
18th. And because I have some other funding I might like to request county to look at.
Okay.
At that time. So for, you know, around housing. So let's, let's throw it all out on the table and see what the county wants to spend the money.
Yeah. And I think the idea was that we would, obviously each of the building owners also has to be game. So that's assuming all four are on board. And some of them, like the flats building, for instance, there's no way that's going to be a million dollar project. It may not even be any county investment. By the time the, especially if the city is planning on kicking in some dollars that might be done in, you know, with between the Main Street Grant, whatever the city kicks in, there may be enough to cover that one because it's been recently utilized. I picked this number honestly with the roundup in mind, because my understanding is they may have some asbestos abatement issues that would prevent them from ever touching it. And so I wanted to have a large enough number that if for, and the roundup out of the four buildings is the one that has six apartments up there. So $600,000 divided by six units, $100,000 is a lot less than we're investing in other projects elsewhere. So that's kind of where that number, that round million dollar came from.
Had to come with something in that. That was a good number.
Yeah. But I would anticipate that the flats building, I don't think that that will, would be that high of a price tag. And I'm not sure that the local, having looked upstairs, I don't think they have any asbestos or lead paint. I mean, both of those buildings are from an era where board knows what they were putting in.
The Murray's building, how many apartments are in there?
You know, I am not sure. It's been since I was a little kid when I was up there. But there's a nice one in the front that I remember from my childhood and I bet probably, I bet that building's probably big enough if they wanted to, to put maybe five, six.
Yeah.
I can remember when I was in high school. Cindy Subway's dad was living up there and those kids were living with her.
Yeah.
Way back when.
Can I add something on this program?
Go ahead.
So this is all, it has not gone to the council other than throwing out, and we're going to talk about it at our work session, which will be when Counselor Stinchfield gets back from Scotland. So it'll be probably the second week in February to try and possibly do something like what we did with the Main Street project. And when you're talking about $200,000 a year or a million dollar project, the way we have looked at it too, is not only is it filling a need of housing, it's going to also, I mean, I just did the simple math of, hey, this building went up by so much, the tax return is going to take us a long, long time to get our investment back. But it will get our investment back. I mean, it's going to take years and years. So I guess what I want Mr. Shannon to know is that even though it seems like a large sum to put into a private place, the tax money is going to offset some of that going down the road. And also too, is it is going to figure out our housing issue, what's going on. Now, when it comes to the city also too, is we do need to make sure that when they do this project, that it actually meets the objectives of additional housing. So I do have a few concerns about some of the businesses possibly wanting to do it for themselves. And even though we'll still get the tax money, it's not necessarily solving that issue. So I think that's one of the big issues we're going to have to talk about with the county court in this program is what are we, what's the end game of housing that we're going to look at? Such as disallowing Airbnb's or are Airbnb's okay or private residences? I mean, again, I think we could put a private residence, but I think we want a little bit more than that from the business owners. And again, it's private property. So it's, if they accept the grant funds, yes, you have a little bit of say, but we need to be realistic on what they're going to be able to do with this project. And I do think M and A, I did talk to one of the flat families, but I don't think she's involved in the M and A building, but she was very interested. So I, we need to reach out to the business owners.
Sure.
The property owners to see. But it's kind of an exciting thing. And if we can get a quarter of it in grant money and coming up the rest of the money and obviously the business owner too. But I also think to the roundups case, they are going to need the abatement. They may need a lot more money in that project. But I think we can also pool together some of the resources. And one is since Jed's on the line, they're going to have some abatement. So some of that roundup property is going to have to become from maybe the Oregon Brownfield project and maybe the they can help with that too. But it's pretty exciting. And I, I'm hoping that we can go ahead and go through the pre-application and then sit down with the council. When are you guys meeting? Your meeting just on housing?
We're, we're meeting on housing on a work session on the 18th. And I think it's critical to, to go through with the pre-app and get the ball rolling. I think it's a great idea, but I do think the county court needs to look at how much money do we want to throw into housing and where's the best place for it to go?
Yeah.
And, and look at a bigger picture than just one thing right now until we have that work session to kind of throw some stuff out there.
Yeah. And I, I guess my concern is, is that we've been throwing around housing for years now.
That's why we want to have the work session.
And this is a project that could really leverage funds. And so I agree to a certain extent, that I do think that we move forward, but we already kind of know what we need. And this might be offensive needs, but anyway.
Yeah, we're definitely, and I was thinking, again, shower thought this morning was we have been very fortunate as a county, we've had a lot of resources and we've been waiting for the right projects. And it feels like this coming year, they're all, we have, I think we're going to need to make substantial investments in our child cares, our housing. If the fiber funds come through, there, it's likely to be substantial match. Like any one of those projects, I think we could tackle very easily within the county's budget. All three at once.
Big deal.
May be a challenge. So I was even looking at like, are there places where we could go ask the legislature possibly for some interesting projects and ideas, since they will be in session. So just something I think we all have to be maybe mindful of is these are all wonderful projects, but they're all very expensive. Okay. So what I am looking for then is could I get a motion to approve? Basically applying for this, doing the pre-application.
I moved to approve the grant supplemental request for the pre-application for the Main Street Revitalization Grant.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the grant supplemental request for the pre-application for the Main Street Revitalization Grant. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And yes, I was definitely planning on adding this to our work session to dig into. And I will get going on that. Speaking of grant submittals, we moved the revised ODOT stiff discretionary grants middle request down to 5.3 under unfinished business. And Shania, do you want me to do like a high level? And then I'm sure Pat will have questions and maybe Leah too? Okay. So we approved a grant supplemental request, what, October?
December, I believe. I think it was early December.
Okay. And where.
My memory's really going.
Originally, we were led to believe from the state that there would not be any match attached to it. And so this is sort of money that the state really is wanting to invest in transportation projects. And so we decided or that we might want to just go ahead and shoot for the moon and look at building an actual transportation facility that's built so that all of our vehicles can be under one roof. It could have office space there. All of those things similar, actually Sherman County is doing a similar project right now in their transportation department. And so, and basically we're just tossing it out there and saying if the state will say yes, we'll fund it. The land that we have been looking at is north of the Fairgrounds. So it would be sort of out of the central hub kind of thing, the idea, because people have asked, well, what are you going to do with the bus barn over here? I think we would likely repurpose it and put our fleet vehicles in there so that they are not in the back anymore. And there's more parking for the public then. But this is sort of where we've landed so far. Shania, the court approved her putting this in. Once she put it in, the state was like, well, wait, wait, wait. There's actually a match attached to it. And so this is going back and sort of cleaning up, like assuming that we got the grants and that the county would be willing to put in the match for a facility.
And that's. Well, I'm going to state for the purpose of a consent agenda.
Yes.
A $500,000 half a million dollar revision. To an item in the.
$200,000 match is all.
20% of 2 and a half million is $500,000.
It's just, yeah, she requested 2 million for the grant is all we're asking. So the grant would just require the.
So how do I come up? I get that there was 200,000, but also when the, on the.
Yeah, the estimated project. That's the estimated project cost, I think, is what that.
So if 20% maybe I didn't do my math right.
400,000.
Shouldn't happen. Yes. So it is.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. Okay. 200,000 was not adding up. So yeah, it's 400,000. I just think that, that, let's make sure when we do these kind of whatever, you know, amendments to something we've already approved that we don't slide a half a million dollar. In on the consent agenda. No, no, I, I get what you're saying. And I, but I didn't discover that that quick. Okay. So my reaction came after I discovered. But regardless, I just think that type of expenditure, we need to have it on the, talk about, make that bigger change. And so that was my other question. We only have one current building that we're using now.
We have three. So we have this one across from the courthouse. We have the one, the city building right behind City Hall, the library in the area. And then we also have the one in Arlington.
I knew the one in Arlington. Do we own the one in Arlington? And would, you would still need it.
So.
You're going to have to house some vehicles there, right? So.
Yes. However, we only have one volunteer driver that's driving out of Arlington right now. So I'm not sure really what the future looks like as far as maybe.
Well, I may be retiring, be available.
Meet your specs.
If for any reason that we were to not utilize the Arlington Department, obviously we need a county that still utilize it for something down there. I was really hoping to kind of get everything on there on the road, just like every other transportation program that I've visited or been to have it. It just takes a lot of our time to run around the bus barn, shovel vehicles back and forth. Whereas if we could just walk out from our offices today and talk to the drivers or get the information or the paperwork here, it's so much easier. So I guess that's just kind of why.
Bob's Commissioner?
It's your department.
Your department and it's almost a half a million dollars.
400,000.
80% of a half million comes that.
Whereas I was thinking if there's a way I could pull from my budget half and then maybe ask the county for half or something along the lines of that. How we do work like that. What's going on is we have an interim region board coordinator because our coordinator took a different position through ODOT. And there's been a lot of miscommunication and misunderstanding. Whereas she has two regions now to keep track of and to reach out to and assist in all of the adult things. And so that's where it kind of got a little.
Is that where we got confused on no match and?
Otherwise, it definitely would have been the first.
I, I would normally remember.
Yeah. We do just for Leah's edification, we have a healthy, I've been stashing since I took office, money in a capital improvements fund. Just for rainy day in case a future court needed, I don't know, a new building or something. So there, we put about a million, million and a half away every year. So there is substantial amounts that have been building over time in there. So I would anticipate if the court. So I would anticipate if the court, and of course, all of this is contingent on ODOT saying we're going to fund it.
Yeah, they haven't came back and said.
The property is owned by the county?
Yes.
Yeah, the on the other side of the fairgrounds, because we're looking at the event center and we're kind of thinking that, you know, if that can building can be at the same time as other, maybe there's some benefit to the construction.
And I will have carryover too from this year from last fall. From twenty twenty one until twenty twenty three, stiff money too. That wasn't utilized, that will just been carryover.
Roll over into it. Sharpen up our pencil and the transportation, see what they could contribute.
Yeah, which I'm sure.
Well, I feel better about it, too.
Yeah, well, there was, I think there's, I can't remember the latest budget, but I thought the state had asked us to set aside quite a bit of contingency at various times. So there's quite a bit of money sitting in the transportation fund that can go towards the match too, I think.
One thing I had to be careful of is the previous grants that we have on working for the carryover because they have to be done in specific projects. But getting it done, we have to wait, see what happens when we use it and we use it, or they will carry over the
Well, and I'd assume if we set up the facility up away from courthouse for transportation, there's also going to be some expenses in IT some of that stuff too that will be.
Yeah, I mean, the nice thing is that we just spent quite a bit of money upgrading the fairgrounds. And so there's fiber access there. There's a lot of good stuff there already. So it would just be really connecting into that fiber thing that's Yeah. In general, I am all for people going after state dollars and bringing them in. So I
If we don't take somebody else.
So I feel like we can come up with a match should we be successful. And I'm not, I'm not concerned about finding it between Shania's budget and what we have sort of stored away for capital improvements. Thoughts on this, guys?
Well, I'm a little more comfortable now.
And do we, do we have any kind of timeline? Do you think when we'll know whether or not the state?
I need to learn for sure, but I wanted to say we'll get some sort of feedback from people. And then for sure, like confirmation. I need to look, but I know it was spring. Because I was really nervous. Took a lot of time to do all that.
And then hopefully they don't come back and say, oh, this is, no, oh, this is all we have to give you.
Shania, I got some encouraging feedback on the application already from the state.
So I was very nervous, but I was very grateful about how they kind of reached back out and said that I did a good job and I had some potential and
Good, good job.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the grant supplemental request form?
I'll make a motion to approve the grant supplemental request form.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the grant supplemental request form. Just to clarify for the minutes, that's the ODOT stiff discretionary grant. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Let us know what happens. Exciting times. Good job, Chase and Funs. Okay, let's move on to new business. Six point one is consider approval of membership amendment to Gillum County Ambulance Service Plan. Is Chris gonna come up and see us or are we gonna take this? Okay, so here's my, here's my basic understanding is that our ambulance service plan, which is approved by the court, was last updated in twenty fourteen, needs to be updated again this time. And and so Chris Fitz is getting us organized for that. In preparation for that, though, she was looking at the existing membership, which I think is basically like looking at different levels of first responders and things like that. And so felt like maybe that that wasn't capturing all the people who really should be around this table. And so her suggestion is that the court amends the committee membership so that we can make sure that we have the representation from both of the health districts, from both of the ambulance coordinators, that dispatch is there, the sheriff's office, a member of the county court. And then Chris Fitz would be staffing, so she would be a non-voting staff member of it. And so the idea would be that we go ahead and approve the membership amendment. That'll allow her to go back to each of these agencies, ask for a name for who would like to represent. Then those will come back to the court, will formally appoint folks, and then they can get started on the process to amend this, the service plan. Does that make sense?
So that's kind of replacing this list, right?
Exactly, on page eight, I think.
Yes, so there's currently a physician supervisor, a nine one one center rep, an ambulance service provider, a sheriff's office representative, a court representative, an EMT, EMT intermediate, an emergency medical responder, first responder, a member of the public, and then a health district board member.
So confusion here is that in your email with the meeting packet, it had all that information, but on the meeting packets, when you go to meeting packets through the website, it's not there. You know why that would be?
Under six point three.
Yeah, it shows.
Is it in your email?
Yeah, it's in the email, but it's not in there. If the list, the list was on, the list of who would be on the
It's on page eight of the attached.
In the packet on the website?
Yeah. So these eight would be replacing the ten that are on page eight of the existing plan.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but that's
I just went to the website and clicked into the under six point one, so.
So here was originally this.
Yeah, I'd looked at it, I was, I was good with the list, I just thought it was funny and couldn't
Sometimes we find little glitches with the website, like
One other thing on the website, I did know this last night, that on the meeting packets for the seventh of December, it says, you have to find it by going to the second. It's listed in the meeting packets as the second of December. Just trying to make the website
Better.
Les would like that.
I'm sure he appreciates it. So is there any concerns about the change that Chris is proposing?
One thing, and I don't see this in here either, that was on there last night, it showed the ambulance service areas. See, and it's not in the meeting back on the website.
I don't know, I don't know if it's setting, because I just pulled it up on the website and I'm able to view it that way. So I don't know what, if there's a glitch with our website, I can email the revised people.
I saw it. Was it on, did it show on the website correctly?
You can see that.
Oh, there it is, it's there now, it wasn't many. Well, I was wondering on the circles on the map, if there's don't get picked up in that?
What?
There's little pieces of the county that don't get picked up in the service area.
And I wonder, and that's something that I know this committee is planning to meet to like revise this plan. And that's why she wanted these appointments and stuff like that. And I think it's on, if I remember correctly, for Commissioner Watkins to be appointed to when we get to six point
There's some areas that don't show up in the service area.
Yeah, and I I would be guessing that this right here, you'd have to approach it from the Memorial County side to even get to it, so.
Probably.
Because it looks like they went as far as the roads will go. I don't know about this little tip down. Have to fly in with a helicopter to get to that.
Maybe Sherman County.
There's always this gray area right here where it's like, oh, is that in our side or the north side, so.
Okay, could I get a motion then to, for the membership amendment?
Okay, I I will move to approve the membership amendment to the Gillum County Ambulance Service Plan as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the membership amendment to the Gillum County Ambulance Service Plan as presented. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we will, I'll have Chris figure out who is going to serve from each of these, and then we'll bring them back to the court. The court will actually need to formally approve everybody, I think. So we'll get those back on the agenda as soon as we hear back from all of our agency partners. Okay, six point two is consider approval of Oregon Trail solar project road use agreement. I would like to table this and bring it back. We we had feedback from Lori Cooper, who is our legal counsel, sent it over to Avangrid. They reviewed, sent it back with amendments, and we have not
That's what I thought I could see in the email, I was gonna ask that. It didn't look like, it didn't look like we're ready to prove because we haven't got Lori to approve Avangrid.
Right, and most of their amendments are minor. It's like fixing things that are capitalized and they're uncapitalizing them. But they did ask, add some indemnification language that I saw that I would like legal counsel to review and just make sure that it's sufficient. So we will pull it, we let Avangrid know that we were going to pull it, and they're okay with that. And so Lori is out on vacation right now, and so Delaney's tracking down another attorney to review it for us.
I thought that's where we were, just going through the string, I couldn't see where that
Yeah, they got it back to us yesterday afternoon at like three, yeah, three, four o'clock. And we were like, I don't think we can get this turned around that quickly. So we will bring that back once we hear from Lori that it looks good. Okay, six point three is consider approval of modification to South Gillum County Ambulance Service Fiscal Year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two Capital Projects Grant Agreement. Delaney, do you want to summarize this one?
Yep, so Shannon Kopic reached out once again. We initially had approved an extension during our July sixth meeting for the same reason that they are unable to obtain an ambulance. And she reached, we extended it until December thirty first, and she reached out again to say they still do not have a timeline for receiving their ambulance yet. And I asked her if she could provide any sort of updated timeline, and they're still waiting to get the chassis information to be sent over. So it's still
So it's been ordered, it just hasn't arrived.
Yeah, they're waiting for the parts to align so it can be assembled and then delivered, but they have it on order. And they're somewhere on a list of people waiting for an ambulance, so.
Well, I just figured out how come I couldn't find that stuff on the other item, because I was looking at this one.
That'll do it.
I was about ready to have Janice back over here, Pat.
I'll figure it out myself.
The website is broken, what is happening?
Yeah, that didn't make any sense when I pulled it up later. Got some common sense going on.
Okay, questions about extending, extending the grant period? Basically, they're just staying in compliance, which I always appreciate when, when our recipients do this and let us know what's going on with our project.
Well, I moved to amend fiscal year twenty twenty one, the twenty twenty two Capital Projects Grant Award to South Gillum County Ambulance Service by extending the grant period to June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty three and authorize the county judge to prepare and execute an amended grant agreement reflecting the same.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we amend the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two Capital Projects Grant Award to the South Gillum County Ambulance Service by extending the grant period to June thirtieth of twenty twenty three and to authorize the county judge to prepare and execute an amended grant agreement reflecting the same. Is there further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Six point four, consider approval of twenty twenty three County Court Board and Committee Assignments. This is just our annual appointing of the three of us to our various committee assignments. Delaney and I did the best that we could based on what people have said they were interested in in passing conversation. So I didn't know if there are any things on here that you guys didn't want to raise your hand for, that we raised your hand on your behalf? Or if everything looks good, then we can just do a motion.
Looks good to me. I just thought the boss should go with the rookie.
It's part of our hazing ritual.
And if they actually had to attend that meeting, those meetings before, so
Yeah, you have that experience.
Fun time.
Could I get a motion to approve?
I moved to approve the twenty twenty three County Court Board and Committee Assignments as presented.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the twenty twenty three County Court Board and Committee Assignments as presented. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Let's move on to six point five, consider committee vacancy appointments. Delaney, do you want to take yours and then Miranda, maybe you can take yours?
Yeah, so we advertised for our vacancies. We put them out on our website and for some of our community partners. And we thankfully received a lot of people interested in serving on our committees, which is great. I was recruiting for the Gillum County Budget Committee, and we received a letter of interest from Sherri Wilkins. And additionally, Brad Anderson submitted a verbal letter of interest that he would like to be reappointed to the committee. And then for our competitive grants committee, we received a letter of interest from Sherri Wilkins. And the rest of them, go over to Miranda.
So we really kind of need another one on the budget command?
We have Wally, Walter Powell is still on.
Wally's on there and then Brad's up for
So we'll have our functioning budget
And then what about the competitive grants committee?
It will be Sherri. Yeah, because Leah was on it, Leah will go off and Sherri will go on, and that will be Miranda and Sherri and I.
And Miranda, do you want to go over yours?
Yeah, so we, we had our last CAC meeting, the Citizens Advisor Committee meeting. We realized that there was really not enough members to even continue. So we started the recruitment process, and we had Tim Jones, Rich Harper, Patrick Sloan, Dudy Kennedy, and Lada Michaelow, who all submitted the letters of interest, so. And then for the statewide transportation improvement fund, Naya has been working with these committee members, so they all submitted letters. We have Daryl Hoteling, Darlene Derpy, Andy, JD Dean, and Shirley Onelow. So yeah, they can get back up and running as well because they've been, they haven't been functioning.
They haven't been meeting for a couple of years, I think.
And then I went through on the attached committee appointments, the little spreadsheet, and I adjusted some of the terms so that way not everybody would go on or off at the same time. And put that together for approval.
And our plan is, is after this, we have a committee's list that Delaney have been working on that we'll send out to you guys. And we're hoping to eventually get like full-on contact information, but for now, we just have like mailing addresses and who's on and their term lengths for all the committees.
Did, did the seriously, committee, they all go up at the same time?
Yes, they were all going off in twenty twenty two. We staggered some, that's why there's just a short, shorter terms for some of them, just to prevent that from happening again.
So my question is, how do I fit into that, that which one?
So there's an ORS that states the requirements of the members that you're supposed to have. So there's appointed, or no?
A court-appointed, there's employees, there's adjacent property owners, there's other landowners in the county. So it just compiled a very, of various members of the community. Um, so it just compiled a ver- of various members of the community as appointed by that ORS. And so you fit in as the county-appointed person.
Luckily, with, it, it just worked out that every person that applied met some portion of the criteria with no overlap. So we have all five categories. Yeah.
Okay.
And it, it's my understanding because I live with somebody who's been very involved with this for a couple of years. It's the county's responsibility, make sure the committee's in place and the committee chair is to run and operate the meetings and not waste money. So you know, I've heard that complaint for a while.
Questions?
And I did email and reach out to Rich Harper about that committee, so.
I think, I think Rich also said that he thought it'd be good to have everyone brought there to see.
Could be.
Landfills so everyone's on the same page. Um, and then we've also switched to having the meetings at the Arlington office. That way we can have Zoom and meet all the public.
So I got a text from April, just so you know. Beginning of the meeting and there was somebody in the office in Arlington looking for the landfill meeting. And I asked who it was and it was Patrick Sloan, who was, was lost and he's a new employee, waste manager. CAC, maybe, so he was wanting to.
He's on via Zoom now, it looks like, to hear his approval.
And any questions about this? One other note, um, I just wanted to put out there is we are trying to make an effort with all of our committees to move them toward more transparent meetings and things. And so, uh, Delaney and Miranda are working on things like supporting them using Zoom and making sure that their announcements are appropriate and all of those kinds of things. And the other thing that we are working on for later this quarter is doing a boards and committees training. That will be for ours as well as any other districts or cities or anybody else that has either newbies or people who would just like to brush up on public meeting laws, public record laws, ethics, just sort of a one-on-one things to be aware of when you're serving on a public, uh, entity. Um, so they're working on putting that together, and once we have those details, we'll make sure that we show that widely. But if, um, you're listening in and you happen to represent a board or a, you know, municipality and think that might be beneficial, just sort of uh, keep looking, uh, to us and we'll figure out a date and get it out to everybody. Um, can, is there a motion to approve the committee appointments? I think we could, unless there's any objections to an individual, I think we could just do it as a group.
I move to approve the committee appointment slate as presented.
My second. It's been moved and seconded that we moved, uh, the, we approved the committee appointment slate as presented. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, thank you to everyone who raised your hands. We cannot do the work that we do here without these committees functioning. And kudos once again to our great staff at the county court, uh, because they, this takes a lot of work to get folks uh, to raise their hands and to keep these committees sort of functioning and do their, doing their work. So, nice job, guys. Okay, let's go into announcements and next meeting. Uh, next meeting is scheduled. Our regular court meeting will be, uh, January eighteenth. That is in Arlington. We are planning on doing a work session that will start at nine that day. So we'll do about an hour. If you need a second work session later, we can always do that. Um, uh, but that will be, the subject will be housing. Um, so we'll spend about an hour on that, and then we'll go into our regular court meeting in Arlington. So both will be there, a same Zoom for both, and so for folks who wanna listen in. And let's go into announcements. Pat, what do you got going on?
Well, it's been a slow last couple of weeks. I did go to a meeting in Port Memorial that Greg Smith had put on with the new speaker of the house. And there was a couple of representatives there from a company we're in India with, and I got to visit with them a bit.
Great.
Well, um, and then kind of this morning, Senator Merkley's trying to put a townhouse together in Arlington on the fifteenth, which is a Sunday. I believe, in Arlington at the Grand Quest Building. Prayer meeting on the thirteenth of January. And I gotta find out when the January Northport meeting is, because I don't know.
Well, yeah, what do you got?
I so, am so super excited to be here on the county court now.
You're here too.
Thank you for all the help I've been getting from Miranda and Delaney. But, um, I think we have, uh, county college coming up in January, nineteen through the twenty first, is it? Yeah, so Miranda and Delaney and I are going, so.
You're gonna love it. It is well-worked.
I know, I am, I'm.
You get to do it in person and not on Zoom like I do.
Snooze best.
I mean, you learn, you'll learn a lot of the mechanics, but the communication and the, the.
Networking.
Yeah, the friendships that you will develop with the other new county commissioners, it really, it's worth its weight in gold, honestly, later on.
Well, and even at the AOC conference, it was like people were very welcoming. They were just like. And I've had a guy that was for the Eastern Oregon Association, he reached out to me, sent me a card. So it's, it's been great, so I'm looking forward to it.
And you've got a meeting with Public Health coming up?
Yes, next Monday. So that'll be, uh, Delaney and I with, uh, Holly and Delaney. So we'll get some of the points covered, but I've been coming up, so.
You're hitting the ground running. Welcome aboard. Um, on my end, uh, promised Catherine I would do a fiber update. Um, I emailed our consultants yesterday saying, hey, it's the end of the year. You were contractually obligated. Where is my update? And they have not, let me check. I don't think they have responded to my email as of yet. Nope. And so I did ask that, uh, they be ready to come talk to the courts. If not our next meeting, then the first meeting in February. Um, so my hope is that they will be able to give us the high-level, um, overview for what it would take to get fiber to most, if not all, homes in, um, the county. And then a high-level price tag, um, keeping in mind, of course, that the intent is to go after federal and state dollars to pay for the bulk of it. Um, and, uh, phase two would be actually dialing in and figuring out the engineering for all of that. Um, so what I'm going to suggest, once we get this back, um, from them, is that we definitely move forward with getting all of those ducks in a row, figuring out, I mean, doing as much as we can so that when the state finally figures out their side of the ARPA problem, um, which I don't know, um, I'll just recap, but right now there's a problem with the fiber funds that came through with ARPA. Because the state legislature passed language that does not meet federal requirements. And so the legislature is going to have to go in and fix their mistakes.
So they do that during the session?
They will do that during this session. Um, so that then the feds will release the ARPA dollars for broadband. And at that point, then I think the Oregon Broadband Office will start figuring out how they're gonna disperse it to us little people out here in the counties. But I, so that, the good news about that is that that buys us a little bit of time while the legislature is getting its act together for us to get our act together and have a plan that's ready to go compete for dollars. Um, but I think that means that we're gonna have to probably do some investment, at least in getting what the plan is gonna be and all of those kinds of things, so that when the state says who's ready for the money, we can raise our hand and say, we have contractors ready. We've already gone through procurement, like we're ready to build it, basically. And know who's gonna run it, like, because we're gonna have to work out the logistics, once it's built, who's gonna provide the service. We haven't discussed it, but I doubt that the county is really interested in being an internet service provider. Um, so figuring out how that would look. Um, I think ideally, we would even go so far as to maybe put out an RFP and figure out who will run it. Um, and have that partnership in place so that all of those dominoes have been lined up when the state dollars are available, and then we can say, we are, we literally have done as much as we can, and now all we need is money, basically. Um, so that would be, that's my goal. Um, so we're gonna, I think, really need to push Eric and his team to meet deadlines going forward. Um, which I haven't been as diligent as about, but now that there's funding that's coming, um, I think we need to. And so that is my update. I don't have, it's not really an update, Catherine, other than we're still waiting to hear. But I did give them firm dates that I would like to have them come to camp.
I hadn't heard about the issue with the state, so that's interesting too, so.
There was something, it had to do with speeds, like the state speeds don't match with what the fed speeds are. And there was some other criteria that the state had passed legislation saying this is how they were gonna handle it. And the, I think Treasury looked at it and said, you're not in compliance with the federal law. So we're not gonna release funds until you fix it. So that's my understanding. So legislature has to fix that before the funds can actually be released.
So is LSN still doing your broadband plan, because they bought out construction? So just so you know, LSN, I don't know if they're meeting tonight, but we are approving, hopefully, our first dark fiber lease with LSN this evening, so yay, that's been a long time.
Finally using that investment.
Yeah, yeah. And so after that, hopefully, we will have a discussion too about, they approached us with, uh, city with a very generic idea and Ashland, and hopefully after the first year, we'll pin LSN on to they want to go with, finally using our dark fiber and what we have spent on internet in the city of London, so.
I would love that. Their idea actually may be useful for this countywide.
Well, yeah, hopefully, if, if it does work out, it could be a model for what the county is doing. And, and it's my understanding that LSN is working with the Sun River Home Mothers Association on a similar project right now. So once that gets done, hopefully, comes back, so.
Yay, exciting. Um, other things I'm working on, let me see here, let me see what else is on my calendar today. And AOC days is starting back up, so I will be in Salem on Monday. Um, and in hoping to maybe stop by and see some of our legislators, uh, to start asking for some funds. And they're going to be seeing me every, every month, probably talking a lot about childcare mostly, um, because that's in my wheelhouse, as you guys know, and I feel like that's an area where, uh, particularly with this governor and this, uh, legislature, there may be an appetite for funding that. Um, and so I wanna make sure that we're first in line if there is money coming out for that. Um, if there's anything else that you would like me to raise, or if you guys are coming too, that'd be great, um, just let me know.
Making sure that, or I, I don't know how much we can, first arm you on, but make, finding out what's going on with the hydrogen hub. Seen anything, because the state's been behind in that whole process.
Okay.
So, um, I know that, that, that Obsidian got a positive letter. There were seventy-seven applicants and thirty-three got good letters and the rest of it did not, of their plan, that, making sure that the state of Oregon gets in line, or gets, gets caught up with Washington anyway.
Got it, okay. Um, let's see, Tim, uh, next Tuesday, the nine-one-one board will be meeting. Um, we are probably going to be meeting more regularly. Originally, we were meeting once a quarter. And we're gonna be, uh, meeting once a month for a while. Um, in large part because we really have not been keeping up with a lot of the policy updates and things we need to be doing. And so now that we have, uh, Kim Snyder down there, she's been working really hard to get all of those back into compliance, Kim Snyder.
So are we getting it, so it's a more operational?
Uh, yes, um, there are several more people hired and going through the training process. Um, but I think I mentioned with dispatchers that it can go up to eighteen months after they're hired before they're ready to operate independently. Um, and so there are several, there's sort of a core of four, um, that have been doing amazing work in keeping this center open, which is a huge lift, like basically not taking days off, um, for months. Um, but, and we've been supplementing them with some contracted, uh, dispatchers from other centers that are coming in on, um, their days off to dispatch for, for us, which has been a help, uh, to give some relief. But I think hopefully the end is in sight, um, in terms of the very low staff that we've been having. The other thing to flag for you guys so that you are aware is, um, Jefferson County, as long as I've been on the board, has been a question on how long they're going to stay. They, when we were at AOC for annual conference, we're very open about the fact that they are looking possibly to leave. Um, Sherman County has also conveyed that they may be looking at leaving, um, which is a very interesting place for us all to be in. Uh, what that would mean for nine-one-one and telling it and all of those things. Um, and so one of the things that we are looking at is whether there could be a secondary center in Jefferson County that would help on the recruitment. It would help on some other things. Jefferson County's complaints mainly are that our dispatchers don't know Jefferson County well enough, and, which is a problem when you have a hub, a region, they can't know every community as well as their own. Um, and so that has caused Jefferson County to look at Creek County and I think also at Wasco County. Um, from what I understand, those other centers are also having staffing issues and so aren't able to take on the traffic from Jefferson County. Jefferson County represents, I think, eighty-seven percent of the traffic that comes into the center here. Um, and so if they were no, if they were to leave and Sherman County were to stay, our staffing problems would go away. Basically, they would be, we could staff it fully with the four that we have on right now. Um, because we, a lot of the graveyard shift, all of that is being driven really by Jefferson County's, um, stops in, down ninety-seven in particular. And so without their traffic, that would change substantially. If Sherman County were to also leave, this center is not sustainable with us and Wheeler, and so we would need to look at, uh, going to another center likely. And that throws into a question, what happens to frontier talent system? Because right now, we're all speaking to each other and using the same thing, but the dispatch centers around us do not use mobileable equipment. And so there's some question on whether everybody would have to migrate their systems over into whatever P S A is compatible with their um, previous. So I just wanna, like, this would be a huge change. And it's obviously not something I'm advocating. I'm trying to figure out solutions to keep them both on board, but I want you guys to both be aware what is happening, um, so that you are not surprised if some of our partners start peeling off. Um, and, yeah. Yeah, it's a, it's a big, this is why the board is starting to meet once a month, is to figure these things out. Um, because it would be substantial changes. And, uh, Jefferson County and Sherman County indicated that if they are making a change, that they would likely tell us before the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, so sometime in the next six months, we would find out, and then have to.
So that would just leave Gillum and Wheeler.
Correct. So Gary and I obviously are both on the board. I've talked to, uh, him about what our options are if they were to both leave. Um, and so we are exploring whether Moore County, uh, could take us on and what that might look like. Um, just so that we have contingency plans in place so that we are not surprised if they go elsewhere. Again, if Sherman County stays with us, I think the three could operate the center, um, with our nine-one-one dollars. But if Sherman County decides to.
We have currently four local employees looking at that center with.
Two Gillum and two Wheeler, yeah. And then a couple of trainees, and I'm not sure where the trainees are from. So there's some that are, I think, two or three that are, um, going through the training process.
How far along in the training process are they?
They were hired. I wanna say they were hired about October, November timeframe. I believe they already went through the DP SST portion, so went. I believe they already went through the DP SST portion, so went to the Salem part and are now doing the center based where they're with mentors and going through that process. Uh, Sheriff Bank Court indicated though that some of them seem to have a, be picking it up pretty quickly. And so my impression was that within the next couple of months, that some of them will be able to do, be working independently. Um, but to your point about the jobs, one of the things that I impressed upon Jefferson County is if they are intending to leave, we need to shift from recruiting and getting people hired into figuring out what this organization looks like after them, because we're talking about needing to raise wages and all these kinds of things to recruit. And if the, if in the end they are not at the table, I don't want the organization getting locked into salary schedules and things like that, that they, we can't sustain, that we had to offer because we need the personnel in order to provide service to Jefferson County. Um, and so they're aware of that, um, but.
Just good.
Yeah, nobody seems to be making a decision.
Wow.
It could be a total mess. Um, so that's why I'm just letting you guys know, uh, that when you're communicating with Jefferson County in particular, if you have friendships that you're developing over there.
Who in Jefferson County is involved in that?
So May Houston just went off. Um, and in my understanding is Kelly Semelink is going to be the new board member. Um, so it would be him and then I think he's probably going to be the main person figuring this out with Sheriff Pollock, who's a new sheriff.
I, I've got somewhat of a relationship with him.
Yeah. Um, yeah.
And they have a new sheriff on top of that.
Yeah, Sheriff Pollock came in, I think, the beginning of this year. So, um, he is, uh, I think he is the, is he the third sheriff? I think he's the third sheriff that they've had since I've been on the board. It had some turnover over there. Um, so, uh, yes, would be helpful to, to push our, uh, folks to make a decision, um, one way or the other. Yeah, so that's fun and light and, yeah, exciting. Um, let me see if there's anything else. Still working on childcare, um. Those are really the big things. Is there anything else that is significant? We are going to be, um, trying to tackle things like, I think at some point, we'll probably need to do a work session and go back over our strategic plan. See if we need to update it, maybe make some assignments to make sure we're moving. Some of them I know we're moving forward on. Fiber's one of them, housing's one of them. Um, but there are others that we may need to come up with a game plan on how we want to address them. And childcare is not in our strategic plan. We might want to add it. Um, so, uh, I think we'll be looking at doing a work session on that. We also are, um, going to be looking at bringing back our mission statement. I don't think it's been touched probably since Judge Shaw maybe was when they wrote it, Judge Prior, I mean, I don't know how old it is. Um, so I think we're going to maybe look at it.
We need to solicit some ideas if we get to book it for.
Yeah, see if it still fits, if we need to change it. Um, we.
What is it?
I don't remember now. We just put it in the job script.
Yeah.
Yeah, I praise him.
Miranda can probably find it quickly. Or I can. It is, I might need you to.
The county's mission statement is to provide essential public services, both legally required and hopefully desired, to protect and enhance the quality of life in effective, efficient, effective and respectful way.
You're all in?
Kind of, yeah. So I think we'll be looking just to make sure, do we need to update it? Does it still fit? And then looking at how we integrate that into how we do employee evaluations, other things like that, um, so that we're actually um, incorporating that into our expectations of each other and our team, so.
And we're also going to be reviewing the grant programs that we currently offer and looking to potentially make some changes to those. So we'll bring those back to the court. I'm hoping sometime in February before they go in.
Does anybody know? Who would know? Maybe you could find it, Delaney, but the, um, road maintenance agreement and a host fees agreement, when did it start? Um, they originally started, I believe, at, I want to say three cents a ton. So they're contributing more than that to it now. And the reason I'm asking is because we need to know what's in that fund and we haven't tracked it very well. And we did a chip seal in two thousand and ten that the county paid for and Waste Management didn't pay any of the eighty percent. And I don't know. That was part of, if it was even in place in two thousand and ten, two thousand and fifteen, we did another chip seal and they did pay eighty percent. There's probably going to be some discrepancies. I work through the next week or so. Repaving Cedar Springs on what Waste Management thinks is in that account and what we think's not.
Um, let me see, other than that, so does the county hold that account? Okay. I think those are the big items for today. Anything else?
Well, one other thing, and I, and I meant to bring the known, it's on my desk, but it's on someplace recently. You two are working on EV charging funding? That, that, the name of that grant that Grass Valley Store got, I have on my desk.
Oh. Bring it to Miranda.
It's a power energy grant, something, so it's got to go through utilities or something, but I'm going to give that
Yeah.
Name of that grant to you guys.
Sounds great. Uh, anything else for the good of the world or not? It is eleven.